They move there same place like sixty years.
Oh, I know. They drag that.
All right. There are.
Any other questions actually? All right, um, we are starting back up. We're gonna move forward with probation. Um, the first one is. Thank you, oh two three five. All right, the floor is yours.
Um, so the two thousand twenty-six department request on salary line for probation officers. The amount that was put into the form one was eighty-seven. I'm sorry, eighty-six, eight, eighty forty-six. We're requesting seventy-seven on that. We have three employees that jumped up a bracket in the state. Uh, three probation officers get a four. Uh, so we do have to pay them that amount, so it's about a nine dollar difference.
Back down to a piece or across the board?
To- total.
And then it looks like the rest is the same.
Rest is the same, we're still asking. The only two, um, fund or lines that we take out of County General are the salaries for the probation officers. And then the juvenile detention center clause. We just like to keep that the same at a hundred and twenty thousand. We spent, as of the last budget status, it was, we had fifty-nine percent, so we have probably closer to fifty percent left than that now. So I think that's a good amount to take.
Any further questions? Any discussion? Is there a motion?
I don't know if we approve with the exception of salaries.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Next, uh, budget.
Which one would you like?
What, whatever order you'd like to go.
Two thousand?
Yes.
Uh, so this is all user fee collected, uh, money, not county money. Our department requests are pretty much the same as last year. This is just to pay our secretaries out of this, uh, office supplies, cell phones, basically all the stuff we need to run the office out of, uh, this fund. So it's not many changes as you can see. Between two thousand twenty-five and two thousand twenty-six.
And do you have your own?
Is this grant dollars?
This is, uh, user fees.
User fees, sorry.
Okay.
Okay. Any further questions? Any further discussion? Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Minus salaries?
Minus salaries.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, or any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. What would you like to do next?
Uh, we can do the opioid settlement money, that's twelve, twelve thirty-seven and twelve thirty-eight. The council noted on that three years ago to, uh, supplement all probation officers that have their CCs credentials, um, to help with the opioid that they're in county. That's actually been super beneficial in not only getting new employees, but retaining employees for paying five thousand above the minimum state salary.
Thirty-seven, yeah.
It's really helpful for us. Uh, both those, both those really haven't changed. We just pay five thousand for probation officer out of those two different funds.
Debbie, can we approve this since it's, we can approve these, okay. Um, is there, uh, any further discussion or questions? Let's take them one at a time. Is there a motion for twelve thirty-seven?
Come on.
Is there a second?
I'm second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. And then, is there a motion for twelve thirty-eight? Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. What's next?
Uh, we can do twenty fifty, that's the juvenile spending account. There's not a lot of money in that account, we don't collect a lot of money from the juvenile client. So no, if we change on that, it's going to be twenty-five and twenty-six.
Any questions? Any discussion? Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Minus salaries?
Minus salaries.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, same sign. Right, motion carries. Oh. Oh, sorry. Okay. So.
No, we took it out anyways.
Yep, sorry. I'm used to the first few lines being salaries, I didn't even look at it, so. All right, thank you. What's next?
Uh, twenty-one hundred is the salary reimbursement, so then probationers get sentenced, um, in the courts. One of their court costs is either, I think it's fifty or a hundred dollars. That money goes into this account. And then, at the end of the year, I write a check to treasure, uh, for this budgeted amount. And that's to kind of compensate for these raises, like the nine thousand extra I'm asking, because that goes directly back to County General. So, it's just the, kind of help counties offset the cost of those statement increases.
Okay. Uh, Debbie, can we approve this one? Okay. Uh, is there any further questions or discussion? Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
I'm sure he isn't.
Oh.
I'm sure, second.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
The last one is a little complicated, Debbie might have to help me with this. So forty-nine twenty-seven, that's our extradition accounts. Historically, twenty years ago, each court had their own probation department. So over the years, we had a separate fund for each court to collect extradition money and pay for extradition stuff. Say, I would like to consolidate that to one account, it's all probation work for all three courts now. It would just make it a lot simpler for us to budget to pay these extradition bills and all that, so. Do you have anything to add to that, Debbie, that needs to be done as far as getting rid of the other three and consolidating into this one account?
No, um, it's, for some reason, when it was set up that way, they're all under forty-nine twenty-seven and then they have sub funds for each court. So, it, like, the revenue that they bring over goes into one of the sub funds. They pay out of another sub fund. So it would be a lot easier just to make one.
Any further questions? Any further questions or discussion? Is there a motion?
Some moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. All right, motion carries.
That's it for probation, I believe Katie DeBries has her, uh, dis绝二 alcohol under the fund, she wants to go over it.
Yep, it's, uh, forty-nine twenty-four.
Forty-nine.
I presented it a little bit more until last year, this year I'm just giving everything the same. So the director and the services are both the same, I'm not sure if they can, most of those, I guess, I don't know if not, but, other changes on my end. Um, the rest is used, it's all collected from, um, the dispensing alcohol and drug program, and then it has to be used for the program, so.
Any questions? Any further discussion? Is there a motion?
If you approve this one, if you'll make the motion that the salaries can be approved as there's no increase.
Okay. Um, is there a motion?
I think that we approve the.
With the salaries.
All right, you want to go, go ahead. Are you making the.
The salaries aren't paid out of, it's, like, our user fees account, so it's not County General.
If you want to make the motion, that's fine, I wasn't trying to.
Sorry, I move to approve with the salaries.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
You got excited about that.
Thanks for coming over.
Yes, thank you.
The ice cream, the ice cream's kicking in. I may have had an ice cream sandwich.
Would, you like to do counsel real quick?
Sure.
All right.
Oh, oh, six one.
Oh, oh, six one. The only changes were salaries. Uh, Debbie and I talked about, what was it? Decreasing TIF neutralization, um, because historically it's been like a very low number, but, um, Debbie, did you hear back on that?
I did not, um, but, what did we just pay?
You think it was like a thousand?
Yeah, Baker Tully sent an invoice last.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, you're at forty-two percent.
Oh, okay.
Uh, oh, six one, you're at counsel. So, you're at thirty thousand for your, and this is correct.
TIF neutralization. Remember Debbie, we talked about this one, because like in twenty-four it was only four hundred and twenty-five dollars and.
Just twenty-one thousand. Yeah, it's about twenty-one thousand, honestly, I don't.
We haven't paid it, but I think we usually.
Usually, the next couple months, I, I really don't know.
We, I know you and I were just looking at historically what it was.
Yeah.
It was like four twenty-five.
We can always lower that come September.
Okay.
If we need to.
Let's, yeah.
I can pull that, your change, the last couple of years, and just see what we've done.
Yeah. It looks like it's always been low.
Adding.
Okay.
RDC is, so that would be.
Okay. So maybe we just leave it as is if we can.
For now, if I find out for the September meeting that it's lower, I will let you guys know.
Well, isn't we traditionally staying on consulting?
Consulting.
Looks like twenty twenty-four we spent one oh seven four hundred.
Yeah, you're at forty-two percent. Since last year you guys paid, uh, some of the Scott Walker bill. For some of the work that the council asked you to do.
How much did we spend this year?
Um, you spent, you're at a date thirty-nine, nine ninety-one.
But what do we, what do, what do we, outside of Scott Walker, what do we traditionally spend it on?
Baker Tully.
How much did we spend?
Thirty-nine thousand.
And Baker Tully?
Uh, twenty thousand of it was for the comp plan. Compliment has a plan.
Another twenty thousand is just. Oh, God. I bet that lady.
Steve.
In.
So we're leaving the twenty-one thousand, that's it for now, right?
Yeah.
I tapped it first.
Thank you.
The twenty-one thousand with TIF neutralization?
Yes.
The problem with that is the council gets stuck with it because their RDC doesn't have a budget.
We moved it over here in twenty-three.
So the council gets kind of stuck.
Yeah.
Even though you really don't have any thing to do with it.
Yeah.
And RDC doesn't have their own.
Any further discussion? Is there a motion?
Move to approve excluding salaries.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Debbie, would you like to go?
Oh, 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 two. And the only thing that I am changing is up in the salary portion. I'm adding twelve hundred dollars, or I'm asking for twelve hundred dollars for a meetings second, for Karen. Since we now have to do the commission meetings. It adds added time and, yeah, on the RDC.
Will we just, will we just do this during that?
I'd really like the commissioners to pay that, but I don't.
No, I don't, I, I'm not, I'm not debating that, I'm saying will we do this during the salaries.
Probably, but yeah, that's the, literally the only thing I'm asking for outside of. Which breaks it down to fifty dollars.
Any further questions or discussion?
Move to approve minus salaries.
Second.
Second? All right, any, um, further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Eleven eighty-one?
Eleven eighty-one. Nothing has changed in there except for the salary, correct? I pay my property up.
Other part.
Yeah. And that's just, it's fees that we collect.
We can't even do anything with this.
There's two lines.
There's two lines, there's a supply line and then platform line.
Any further questions? Is there a motion?
Some move.
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Twelve sixteen, auditor eligible. And that's the same as it has been.
Any questions? Any discussion? Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Twelve seventeen, which is the county elected officials training line for fun. You guys increased that last year a little bit, I don't know that anything really needs to be done.
Any further questions? Any discussion? Is there a motion?
Some moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same. Motion carries. Mike, would you like to go real quick?
I sure would.
Thank you.
He says, pick me, pick me.
Can I please, can I please?
Oh, oh, one, two.
Yeah, I feel very kind of uncomfortable about. Have myself on the back.
That's okay, just go for it.
Yeah, that's right, come here.
Anyway.
We'll do it for you.
This is, uh, oh. This is, uh, the claims that I've worked so far this year and, uh.
Thank you.
Ones that I did, I've got things for last year as well. And then, uh. I didn't change my thing very much, I just asked for an increase in a couple of areas. And I'll go over what the reasoning for that would be. I've got one copy of it, sorry. Anyway, it's the same thing, it's just how many I've done in the months, so, uh. But this is conduct, oh, there it is, this is twenty-five.
You say claims, these are what?
Primarily what I do is.
Mike, you gotta be in front of that microphone at the table.
Or, I mean, it's, if it's, we're picking them up right there.
Just one right there.
If you're trying to hand us something or show us something, just make sure.
Yeah, primarily what I do in the office is assist with disability claims. Tie veterans to benefits that they're entitled to, but they don't have the wherewithal to get there. They don't know how to navigate this bureaucracy of the VA, which is awful, pretty much. So, and that's, that's what I do. I, it's not the only thing that I do. Uh, I do a lot of other things in the veterans' office that don't have anything to do with pensions and claims, but, uh. Primarily that's what, that's the bread and butter of the office. And this information right here is kind of cool. It is, uh, I'm not a numbers person, so I don't know a lot about it, but there is, uh, there's a new Indiana Department of Veterans Affairs Director, and he is a numbers person. And he's forced them down there, and you can go on their website and get this information. But it's basically, uh. A rundown of each individual county, the number of veterans that we have in our county, the number of, the amount of money that the federal government pays Indiana to support claims and pensions and things like that, that are in Boone County. This year, sixteen million, eight hundred and fifty-some thousand dollars was attributed to Boone County veterans. Now, uh, like I said. That is, that is a direct fingerprint, because when I started this job in two thousand fourteen, it was around eight million dollars. And the same amount of veterans, if, like, when I went from part-time to full-time two years ago, it's almost, it's, it's a little over two million dollars more. So that's kind of an attribute to, uh, more time in the office. But it is also a tribute to, uh.
Thank you.
Hard work. You know, putting the, putting those to the grindstone and just doing what has to be done to support. Getting these successful navigations of the claims that veterans have to have to receive the benefits that they deserve. So. In my, uh. Thing, I met with Mr. Mar, and we discussed, uh, what needed to be changed, and one of them was my training amount. And the reason for that is, uh. They, if you've been watching the news, they're, they're gonna put the detainees at the thing in Johnson County. And that's where we went for our training, so we're not gonna be allowed to go there. So that means there'll be more expense, uh, in travel, and, uh.
They taking it to Fort Wayne, didn't you say?
Possibly.
Okay.
Haven't decided yet.
Okay.
We went to Camp Atterbury, which was kind of cool, they let us stay there, didn't cost anything. If we go someplace else, there'll be expense, you know, hotel rooms, stuff like that. So that went from three hundred to five hundred dollars, and then my dues, there's a bill, the House Bill four-three-three, that the state of Indiana hasn't really decided what they're gonna do, but. The rumor is they're gonna make all of us join the National Association, which right now I have a licensing through the American Legion, I have a licensing through the VFW, and the Office of General Counsel in Indianapolis. And, uh, so I have to pay dues to those three agencies. If they make us join the national one, it'll be another fifty to a hundred bucks. I don't know the reason for it other than, because they don't, they don't, I mean, they don't, being a part of that doesn't teach you anything more than what you already have, so. Anyway, that's what the changes to my budget from last year to this year would be.
Mike, can you clarify, did you want your training up from two fifty, or travel up from the five hundred?
No, it was three hundred, and it went to five hundred.
What are you talking about, which one?
The, the, the training.
It was two fifty.
Oh, I mean the travel, I'm sorry, yes.
Travel was five hundred, you want to keep it at five hundred?
Yeah, I didn't change the training. I don't really have to pay for the training, in fact, the state is responsible for, they're required to give us continued education. That's how they got in trouble with Hamilton County.
Yep.
Is, uh, because they did not provide that adequately. So, uh, I don't have to pay for that, so. But the travel expense I do, and, uh, and of course the dues to be part of those associations I do, so.
The travel stayed the same on my sheet, it's staying at five hundred, do you want it to go up more than that? Is that what you were asking?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's five hundred this year, and you requested five hundred next year, is that what you wanted up?
Yeah.
Five hundred?
Yeah, that's fine.
Just want to make sure.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't need, I don't need to change that at all. Oh, I don't know where they're gonna have us go for, we do an end, we do a training in the spring where all of us are together, there's ninety-two of us that hold the license, that I hold, one in each county. And, uh, that's the only time in the spring and in the fall that we're all together. And we, honestly, we learn more from being around other guys doing the same thing. Hey, I got a guy that asked for this, or how do I do this, and, you know, and stuff like that, so, than we do from the state of Indiana.
How long are those conferences?
Three days.
They're three days. Then I, I'm a little concerned that you might be underfunded in the travel. If you have to pay three motel, or two, two nights motel, I, yeah.
How many, how, how many times do you do travel? Well, I just, I just, uh, in the spring and in the fall, but the spring one was in Indianapolis, so I drove back forth to home for that one. The fall one was in Camp Atterbury, and of course we're not going there now.
So you go up some more farther probably?
We, uh, we will probably go up to Fort Wayne is what the rumor is.
And then the one that was in Indianapolis, is it in Indianapolis every year?
It has been, yeah, it's, for, for the last five to six years, it, it's at the War Memorial, which is right downtown. But they, they lost, for some reason they lost a contract with that, and they said we wouldn't be going back there.
You're not going back to Indianapolis then?
Uh-uh. Which is, it's great for me, because I'm in Donut County of Indianapolis, but there are service officers that are in Fort Wayne that have to come to Indianapolis.
So your travel is five hundred? Heaven's help. Okay. I think what Karen was trying to ask, you probably need to add with Dana, so you probably have to.
Maybe you're gonna have to travel to Fort Wayne, because you'll want to spend the night, you have to be fifty miles to spend the night, so.
Okay.
That would be.
If you're staying somewhere with a hotel, you're, you might need a little.
Yeah.
We can give you like fifteen hundred dollars or whatever, because you don't spend it, even though we get, you got it, you know what I mean?
Yeah, if I don't use it, I don't use it.
Right.
I don't, I'm very studious about money.
We'd like to hear that about you.
Yeah.
Debbie, do you think fifteen hundred is enough?
Oh, yeah.
I think so.
I think even a thousand would be plenty.
Probably.
Okay, so maybe a thousand? Okay.
That's all, that's all I have, uh, I, I want you guys to know that I love my job, I've worked at it, I, I'm busy with it. It's ever-changing, and, uh, new rules and new regulations, and you have to stay right after it, but, uh. It's challenging, and I, I still enjoy doing it, I've been on the job for over ten years now, so.
Thank you for your service.
Yeah, that's fantastic.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
Any further questions?
And you, and the girls, oh, you, I couldn't do it without them, so much, I wouldn't even be here without them.
Any further questions or discussion? Is there a motion?
I would move to approve adjusting travel expenses up to a thousand dollars, which would affect the bottom of line approval to sixty-five thousand, five hundred, eleven dollars.
Do minus the salaries?
Minus the salaries.
Oh, minus the salaries, yes, sorry.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same. Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
We have just a few minutes before the court. Judge Kincaid, we're actually ready as soon as. Perfect.
Yeah, we do.
Good afternoon, Judge.
Yes, sir. They're there for you.
So we're looking at zero-two, zero-one. Floor is yours.
Floor is mine?
It is.
Do you have any questions?
Looks like it's flat, except for salaries.
Did we, whose budget did we take money out of Debbie's?
Judge Kincaid was nice to help us with circuit.
Yes, popper fees?
Popper fees? My question is, because we took out of yours, do you feel comfortable going into next year with that popper fee kind of staying flat?
I feel comfortable with it, because, one, we've been under, under budget for several years now. And, two, if I come and ask for money because I've run out of money for popper attorney fees, I mean, it's really, it's really not a question. It, it will be given to me, it's got to be given to me, it's a matter of law, I've got to hire these attorneys. So I'm not, I'm not too concerned about it. I was happy to help out the, the other office as opportunity arose last year. But that said, I, I, I think that answers your question. Is that fair?
Yeah, I mean, if you, you need it, you can always come back, but...
Sure.
Great that you were able to...
I try to avoid things on your agenda, so I try to...
You know what, if I could get you to repeat that, and I can send it on a recorder and all the other, that'd be done well.
Not everyone uses this office. You know, I'm, I'm only allowed to be here on times when you're considered matters for the court. So that's, that's why you don't see me much, it's not, I'm not interested or care about what you're doing.
I don't think I personally.
Yeah, if there are any questions, I would just put in a plug for the other judges this year. For several years, I have gotten a five thousand dollar supplement that this council's provided me, that it could provide me, and I'm grateful for that. And it would be, it would be nice if, in this year, with salaries fixed as they are, and we've gotten word from the state of Indiana that our salaries are not being adjusted this year. Just fine, I, I don't begrudge that. But it might be a good, a good time to think about considering bumping up the judge's salary for the other two offices to five thousand. And, you know, I know that there are budget constraints, obviously, there, there are things in the works that are bigger than, bigger than what I have to say. But, but in that sense, I'm hopeful that that happens, and...
We actually have that in our Form Ones.
Oh, good.
Yes. Yep.
Five thousand dollars for the judge?
It's per statute. We actually did it two years ago.
Kincaid is the only judge that has been receiving it throughout the years. Two years ago, you increased it so that the other two judges and the prosecutor could have it.
I'm, I'm just about two years behind, which is okay.
It's okay, it's okay.
You didn't have to ask for it.
Yeah.
I, I didn't know, I didn't know, you had to do it, so.
We appreciate everything that you do, and the funding is obviously essential for everything we're trying to accomplish. And I don't know, if, if there aren't any other questions, I guess I'll check out early.
Okay. Any further questions or discussion? Is there a motion?
So move minus salary.
Is there a second?
Second.
All, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Judge.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can you give me a question?
There's a statute? I thought the statute says, is it five?
They have to five.
I thought that's, because the statute is five. That's what the max is in the statute, yeah.
Are we required to do?
Yes, you have to do it. You have to do it for the highest judge.
More than fifty percent of the judges and prosecutors come to get it as part of the salary. Solid study recommendation.
I'm, I'm fine with doing it, let's make sure we understand. Somebody tell, hold on, somebody tell me if there's a statute that, okay, let's just make sure we're clear.
There is a statute for the five thousand.
All I was saying is, yeah, that's what I was saying, is...
It's a minimum of five thousand plus the social security and that.
I thought it was a max.
It was a max?
I can try.
You're telling me there's a statute, you're telling me that there's not a statute?
Well, there is a statute, it's not required. It's a statute that allows counties to pay supplements to judicial officers and prosecutors up to five thousand dollars. It's up to each individual county. It was in place years ago, years ago. And what happened was, one year, the council decided to take it away. They couldn't take away from Judge Kincaid, as long as he was in office. He's continually staying in office during that time. During the salary study that they've done, that they did, where his research did, I personally...
What salary study? The one that we did, or the one that you're talking about there?
No, the one that, the one that we did, the first-person salary study. That was part of the recommendations that we re-implemented this. And we did, it's a new study. So if you want to take it away, you're going to have to wait until the next judge for that spot, or the next prosecutor for that spot. Because you can't take it away from the city. It's one thing we can't do.
One's the grandest.
Yeah.
We did that two, was it two or three years ago we did that?
Yeah.
Kincaid has always received it, as long as I've been here. Two years ago, we increased it.
Or added the other two.
When Judge DeWitt left, or when Judge Beckley left, and Judge David left, and Todd left, they took it away from those positions.
Judge Pettit? And I can pull that for you in a minute.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Bruce Pettit, Judge Superior Court Two.
O two, O two.
Hey, Judge, the floor is yours.
Okay. I made only two changes from last year's. And everything else is exactly the same. The first change was for furniture and fixtures. We had two hundred and fifty, and I asked for two thousand, seven hundred and fifty. And the reason I did that was, I'm leaving at the end of next year. That's just too bad. But in my, in my office, or Superior Court Two's office, I have my desk, file cabinets, three chairs, and then another table and an end table that I all, I brought from my private office. And so I'll be taking those, and I'm thinking, okay, whoever's going to come in to replace me, if they can't find the furniture in the courthouse or laying around somewhere, is going to need some furniture. So I ask for that to be budgeted, not for me, but for whoever's coming after me. And then the second change I made was on interpreter, because they, we've got a, I don't know if Judge Kincaid addressed this, but we have a whole change in our interpreters that the contracts are now individual with the courts and not through the state, or not through court services. So right now, we're paying out of our budget, and we've already this year had to ask for additional funds for interpreters. So it's just a change in accounting. Now, whether the court services are going to reimburse the courts for the interpret, interpreter costs or not, that's up in the air, I don't know. And if, if they do, then this money can all go back. But we need to have the funds for interpreters, because constitutionally, we have to have interpreters for persons that English is not their first language. And those were the only two changes I made. Be happy to ask or answer any questions.
Thank you for your service.
Oh, thank you.
First and foremost. How long have you been serving for my man?
Uh, this, next year will be my twelfth year.
Twelfth year?
You can add a few years of prosecuting onto that, too.
And private practice.
I had a, I had an opportunity, I don't know, two weeks ago, to look at courthouse with the sheriff, Commissioner Pale. We asked for, what's it, twenty-seven fifty?
Twenty-seven fifty, the two fifty is what we had last year. And so I had my staff kind of just do some pricing on furniture, office furniture, and they came up around twenty-five hundred dollars to replace everything that I might have taken. But again, and I think, told Mr. Lamar this, I don't know what's hanging around the courthouse. A lot of times, they scavenge or find things. But I, I don't know what's available for the new judge, and I just want to make sure that that person is taken care of.
Yeah, that's fair.
Oh, I appreciate that. Since you're leaving, which you always say, speak freely. You've been a judge, you've seen the chambers, we were looking at it. I'm sure you think you could probably use some updating, renovations, or remodeling. So I'd love to know, just as you're leaving, if there, if there's anything else outside of furniture and fixtures that, you know, can you use your opinion as you act, especially with times changing.
I appreciate the question, I really do. But I have to confess, I'm kind of a man of modest means.
Well, that's what I appreciate, is, is because as you're leaving, and the new judge is coming in, and I think about things, we looked at some security upgrades that the sheriff was very concerned about, but also since, you know, you're leaving, and the taxpayers can't look at you like, oh, the judge said this, and...
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, I... My chambers especially are kind of not quite as nice as Superior One or Circuit. But that's, that's because they changed that from a kind of a meeting room to a courtroom, and then had it, you know, modified it to the chambers. The, the built-in cabinet or bookshelves that are there are not very nice. And, and they don't make a, a grand presentation, if that's what you're looking for.
Nope, I'm, I want you to speak freely.
And so I, I would say that, and the credenza that I use is broken down.
Yep. Listen, Judge, I, I, I want you to speak, because I, I saw it, it's easy for you to say it, if there's a new judge coming in, I want you to be able to just...
Yeah, it is, the credenza is all broken down, it's falling apart, and it will hold my computer, so it really works.
And your staff struggles for space, don't they?
Well, we've actually got that space down near our, our small claims offices, too.
Oh, okay.
So we, the, the council did address that a couple of years ago.
Okay.
And it really kind of, really helped us out a lot in giving us enough room. So that's, that's not a problem at all.
Okay.
But, yeah, I mean, it, it could, it could use code of pain and a little updating.
I, I appreciate it, because I think I'm eating one of modest means, and I'm always questioning how monies are spent. But when I walked in and I looked at it, I was, I was a little shocked. I was just like, oh, wow, like, but again, I think even...
Are you calling me a slob?
I would not say that. No, sorry, I would never, I would never insinuate that. I think I was a little, I was a little taken back, and, and I commend Commissioner Pale and Sheriff Hares. Sheriff Hares is looking at it from a security standpoint, and I think Commissioner Pale was as well, kind of saying, how do we make sure, one, our security and safety of our staff is paramount? But also, you know, it was like you're walking into a judge's chambers and his staff, and he was just kind of, he was just kind of, we're just taken back, to be honest. It was just saying like, man, how do you upgrade this? You don't have to break the bank, but there was just furniture and some other things. And I had a meeting, now that she's here, Judge Shine's office, and she was like, oh, some of this furniture's like twenty years, thirty. And I was just like, wow, but oftentimes, I've seen emails that have come out, someone will be getting rid of something, and it's like, hey, this is free to use, but since you brought it up and said you're taking your furniture, which is yours that you brought, your personal furniture with you, you know, they were just like, hey, how do we do this? And they were, it's coming up during the budget workshop. We have, you know, quite a bit of money in our reserves. How can we as a council potentially look at that, especially since there's a new judge coming in? But looking at all of our, you know, court, our different chambers are looking at that. But I wanted to ask you personally, I'd already had that in my notes, to kind of ask you directly, like, you're leaving. So it gives you kind of the, the right...
The freedom.
The freedom to just speak freely, yeah.
You guys, it's all the nice stuff.
Yeah, so, but thank you, I wanted, I wanted to make sure you had that opportunity.
Well, I appreciate that. And I'm sure whoever's going to come after me would appreciate it, too, because I really haven't done a darn thing to that office since I got there. Other than, I think they painted it once.
Didn't they paint in windows?
Yeah, but I have new windows.
Those were crucial.
Okay, well, thank you.
Any further questions or discussion? Is there a motion?
Move to approve minus salary.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, and it's exciting for working with you. It really is. And I'll do it one more time, I guess.
In a file cabinet.
Judge Shine, your first one is zero-two-three-two.
Yes, exactly.
I'm requesting an increase in attorney fees for proper counsel. Asking for five hundred thousand there. I'm also asking for an increase in attorney fees from four thousand to ten thousand. Other than that, I'm not asking for any other increases.
I just want to ask, do you think that's enough for the popper, because you're currently at twenty-six percent right now?
Well, I mean, I think that's enough. I do. I don't want to ask for too much, but I do think that, I mean, I thought about it a little bit. I talked with our bailiff, and I think that should suffice. Now, I'm not going to guarantee that it will, because... But I will say that this year, we've had some pretty serious trials and expensive trials. And so I don't currently know of anything pending that's going to go to trial next year. But I want to cover all bases, so I think five hundred is appropriate.
Any further questions or discussion? Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
All the, or any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Judge. I think I J D A I.
Yes.
I spoke with ninety-one forty.
Ninety-one forty?
Yes.
Uh, handling court, handling services administrator, Lori Thompson. She doesn't have really any...
Ninety-one forty-four.
Changes, so we just get the same figures from twenty-twenty-five's budget. The salary that is in their counsel is just a supplement, so it has no increase on it.
Okay.
So if you approve this, you can approve it.
Any further questions or discussion?
Is the motion in?
No, I was saying, was there any further discussion before a motion? Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you.
I'm going to do a call set. Yes, twelve-twenty-two. Four levels. I have no changes, other than the other budget request.
Four levels.
Anything in here, it's not? Do you have anything here? Yes, it's not.
But it's blank.
Yes. I mean, there's no changes.
Oh.
Oh, numbers.
Oh, there's no number on it, okay.
You want to do the family recovery. Do you want to do that one?
Yeah, we'd like to do that one. I, I haven't gotten any requests for increases for family recovery court.
And I think Lori said everything was the same.
Everything is the same.
Nine-nine-eight-six?
And, of course, we're all worried about family from the state, although we'll still have that. If it happens, so. Yeah, no changes on the family recovery court.
It looks like there were, Debbie, that there were changes downward, like they were cut. They supposed to be, okay.
Those numbers are from Lori.
Okay.
That was, that is what she anticipates receiving.
Okay. Are there any further questions? Is there a motion?
So move excluding salaries.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Do we do?
Thank you, Judge. Thank you.
Okay, we are running ahead in our... Okay, we are running ahead, and our next department cannot be here until three, so I ask Prosecutor Eastwood if we'd like to go. Is anyone opposed to that?
Well, we... When are we scheduled? What is he actually scheduled?
Next week.
I would rather we wait, because I need to go over with him our plan for his budget, because he has a tax three. What is your savings projected to be?
Net savings is 500.
Yeah, I need to go over that with any detail. Nobody's going over. I'd wait till next week.
I have some budgets that's like 1,315, who knows?
Okay.
If you want to do those, yeah?
Okay.
1931 first?
Sorry, can you say that again? 1, 3?
4931.
See, I didn't even hear that correctly.
So, we've never done this before. Every... Every post of the order until that actual one was due for a while, was it's kind of created a budget for our diversion referral on child support lines where we, instead of doing everything unappropriated, we appropriate the money, you know, where the guidelines, our guide rails, on how that money is spent. And so, this is just an estimate based on this year's, you know, making sure we have plenty to spend. We're not going to spend this money. Just put some guide rails on the spending of this money. This is all money that we get in user fees. This isn't tax general. This isn't money from the state. This isn't money from... From you guys or from the property taxing that was tough. This is stuff we get from user fees. And this is just putting some guide rails on that money, spending of that money.
So that, actually, the year is gone, you can compare to what you thought you were going to spend, and it's more of an internal tool for you to use going forward?
Yes, internal tool for me to use, also state board accounts, and then, I can, as we go forward, I want to drill this down even more. But this was a general budget that, you know, looking at, we spent... We track it internally on a spreadsheet, but this is doing it more, a little more transparent for everybody.
Sounds like a good idea.
Yeah, Debbie, that's what I want to do. She mentioned, I'm like, I was 100% on board, like, yeah, I want to do that. Let's do it.
Good job, guys. Way to team up.
Teamwork.
It's hard to track unappropriated. We have a, I mean, when state board says they paid $3,000 out of unappropriated, well, it takes us a while to track it back.
Yeah, I mean, we know exactly. Our...
They know, but...
We know exactly, and our vouchers say exactly what's for, like trial expense, right? Trial expense, DEPA, trial expense, you know, expert testimony. Our voucher says that, but we don't have an internal document you can go to right here that everyone can see. I have, I keep that. I've got a spreadsheet. I just let you right now that tracks all that, you know.
So, having said that, Debbie, could we even have to approve this, because it's sort of an internal tool, or we should approve it because...
You should, yeah, because it is user fees.
Thank you.
It's kind of a blessing.
Are there any more questions, then? Is there a motion?
I move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
4934, same.
Set it up for the same reason.
Yeah, one, the first one was diversion money. This one is deferral traffic ticket. Traffic ticket. Same, same.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that's right. That's, yeah, that's one salary that we paid out there.
Any questions? Is there a motion?
So moved, excluding salaries.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
I don't know the number for the trouble. Thank you.
These guys are greedy about these numbers.
Yeah, so I don't, I don't rarely, rarely kind of...
Were you able to do that?
I'm always... Thinking about numbers all day long.
So, this is somewhat different in that this is money that we get from the federal government. 8897. So, we get money back from the federal government for doing child support. They give us money. I only can spend it on child support related matters. So, again, so, our child support division, they're, when it comes to spending money, they are separated from everybody else. So, like, our copy paper, they buy their own copy paper. Like, we, you know, it's, yeah, we... Little word, word is Chinese wallet. I don't know if, there's a new word you're supposed to say. I apologize if I don't know the word.
I'm sorry.
For what?
Well, in the adult world and law firm, Chinese wallet, it's a call down. Supposed to say something else than Chinese wallet.
Oh.
Not culturally appropriate.
My gosh, that's, yeah, that's the term.
But...
Oh, because you can't say bull and china shop anymore. You can't say Chinese wallet.
Yeah, well, it's, you're separated from everyone else, so everyone else can't.
Okay, so there isn't a conflict.
Yeah, so, in this scenario, this money can only be used for child support stuff, and so, we, it's separated from everything else. And this is money that's given to us by the federal government.
Like firewall or something.
Yeah, I can't, I don't know what culture appropriate is. So, this is money that we only can spend there, and it's the same, it's the same theory. We want to track it, so, yeah.
So, 181 is from the federal government, and you know that number for 2026?
Well, that's what we have in there right now. Every year, I mean, every year, we get money, and honestly, we're trying to find a way to spend it, because I'm afraid it's going to be taken away. I can't find a way to spend this money. I shouldn't say that, but I'm having a hard time. No, seriously, I really am.
Say that again?
I'm having a hard time trying to find a way to spend this money.
We have four child support funds, and it does not get spent.
Yeah, it's hard to...
Are there criteria to restrict you?
And I can't supplant...
We buy all the laptops for all his staff out of it. Each time he can buy anything for his, for those people, we always buy it out of that one.
But I can't supplant, like, you can't say, you can go, okay, no longer pay this person. You can't talk supplanting. I can't do that. I can't say, you know, so like, for instance, if you ever get a part-time person, if I ever need for a part-time person, you want to pay them out of this money first. You know what I mean? Like, I need to spend this down.
Can you not pay your full timers out of it?
No, it's called supplanting. Yeah, yeah, you can't, yeah, you can't, you can't say, well, I've paid that before. I know I'm going to pay it, you know.
You don't have a dedicated person doing child support?
I have four.
And they all paid out of it?
No, they can't pay.
Oh, you can't pay them out of it?
No, it's called supplanting. In the grant world, you cannot get a grant or get money from the federal government, where if you've paid for it before, you say, I know I'm going to pay it. I'm going to use this grant or this other money. You can't do that. So, what I'm saying is, if we ever hire a new person to work in child support, we will first use this money and spend it down before we come to the council and ask them. And then, so... But I'm trying to, like, I buy all their furniture. I mean, I buy everything for them. I pay for it as much stuff as I can. They don't...
Wow.
Yeah.
It's an interesting conundrum.
Yeah, all their coffins, everything, anything we can...
It's Chinese wallet, actually.
Any further questions? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Yeah, when I come back next week, I'm going to be there, and I'm going to be there soon, but my budget, there was an air last year and uploading. So, the raises didn't get included. All right, so we fixed that air.
Thank you.
We're asking for an additional, but I'll explain to you on going there.
He's explaining it to me before.
Why we think there's going to be, and Sean and I have gone over this, why we think by doing this additional, we are going to save money for the next five years. So, I've got it all for you guys, and I'll send an email next year to kind of outline after I'm going to there, and I'll send it to everybody.
Is it PowerPoint?
No, it's just what I'm saying. I'm not going to push you guys on PowerPoint.
We caught that slide.
Are you going to tell us how much you're going to save, or is that just you go save it?
I'm going to save, well, I believe we'll save a significant sum.
I know. I'm thinking we ought to have a drum roll.
That'd be a long one.
You can tell me the number, but I'm not...
Yeah, in the end, I think we'll save a significant sum. I'm going to meet with them.
Just like lunch.
We have to get it online at first. We have to do this stuff together. Once I've done it, we can save.
We're just glad you're on public record, because we're going to hold you to it.
I, I'm, yeah, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Debbie, do you know if coroner or health department would want to go today?
Uh, it's, it's today.
This is six, so the health department.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, we can take a five-minute recess, 10-minute recess?
10 minutes?
Yeah, 10-minute break.
Any recess?
Recession, that's right.
If not, we may, we'd be counsel recap real quick.